All ready, so we can call the meeting to order with a roll call, please. And I guess I'll start with the script as we're queuing up the roll call, maybe. But I'd like to thank everybody for joining the February 11th, 2021 Lewisville Planning Commission Meeting. I am Chair Steve Braunice. Because of COVID-19, this meeting is being held electronically and is being recorded. All attendees will show up in the attendee panel for us to see. Attendees are muted unless called upon to speak during public comments. To request permission to speak, an attendee must raise their hand by clicking on the Raise Hand button at the bottom of the screen. Attendees calling in may enter *9 on your phone and a raised hand will appear on your behalf. When I've acknowledged a member of the public and you have been unmuted, please first state your name and address, then you'll have three minutes to speak. If you wish to speak on another topic, you will need to raise your hand again. Thank you for following these directions and maintaining meeting decorum. With that, we could start with a roll call, please.
Commissioner Deal.
Present.
Commissioner Heffner.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Commissioner Moline.
Here.
Commissioner Rice.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Chair Braunice.
Present. Thank you very much. And our third item on our agenda, but the first of my item of business for all this evening, is the election of the Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. I would like to make a motion to continue with the Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary that we had last year. So that would be Commissioner Braunice as Chair, Commissioner Rice as Vice Chair, and Commissioner Williams as Secretary. I thought you all did a wonderful job last year, and I'm hopeful that you would all be interested in those same roles this year. So if you are, I'd be willing to make that nomination.
And I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Moline. Thank you, Commissioner Deal. There are options in case of anybody wanting to consider any of the other members of the Planning Commission. I see some shaking of heads that we're okay to move forward. All right, great. Thank you then. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the table. Nobody seems to be running away, so with that then, I think we need a roll call vote, please.
Right. Commissioner Heffner.
Yes.
Commissioner Howe.
Yes.
Commissioner Moline.
Yes.
Commissioner Rice.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Chair Braunice.
Yes.
Commissioner Deal, yes.
Very much for your confidence in us. Moving along then, can I have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Commissioner Howe, on a second from Commissioner Moline. Thank you very much. And roll call vote on this. We're still sticking with roll call votes and everything, right? Yes, great. Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Okay, can you hear me right now?
Yes, we can.
Great. I have a little trouble, sorry. Commissioner Howe.
Approve, yes.
Commissioner Moline.
Yes.
Commissioner Rice.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes, approve.
Commissioner Deal.
Yes.
Commissioner Heffner.
Yes.
Chair Braunice.
Yes. Motion carries. Now looking at the approval of minutes from the November 12th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. First, I want to check to see if any of the commissioners have any substantial factual corrections that they wanted to enter. I don't see anybody at this point in time. With that then, can we?
Motion to approve the minutes from November 12th, 2020.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Howe and Commissioner Williams. A roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Moline.
Yes.
Commissioner Rice.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Deal.
Yes.
Commissioner Heffner.
Yes.
Chair Braunice.
Yes.
Yes.
Have been approved. At that point, and now then, we would like to see if there's anybody who would like to speak to an item that is not on this evening's agenda. So it's an open, open, public comment. At this point, if you had something to say that was for an item not on agenda, we'd need you to raise your hand and/or press *9 if you're on the phone to get your virtual hand raised. Saying nothing, okay. Thank you for confirming that. Saying nothing, then, we will move into our first item of business. As we move into that, I want to check to see if any of the commissioners have any disclosure or conflicts of interest.
Yes, German, I have a conflict and will not participate on this one.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner Heffner.
Commissioner Heffner, would you like me to text you? Are you rejoining the meeting later? There's, I don't think there's anything substantive if you want to sign off, but I can let you know when you'd like to come back, if you'd like.
If anything substantive comes up, would you shoot me a text? And I'll plan to see all of you next month.
That sounds great. Okay.
Well, I think we need, we want him for the discussion later on, right?
For the, yeah, I mean, I think it's just for like staff updates, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll let him know when we're hitting that. And if he's not, if he doesn't rejoin, I'll send him an email with what we go over, so.
Okay, great. Or, yeah, watch it a later date, whatever works best. Great, all right. Thank you, Commissioner Heffner.
Hi, Dietrich.
All right then, if we could start with the certification of public notice.
Certainly. So the application was, all public notice requirements per the code were met on this one. I will share my screen for you for presentation. One second here. All right, can you all see my screen? Okay?
Yep.
Great. All right, so tonight we are to consider a, it's a public hearing for Resolution 2, Series 2021, recommending approval of a preliminary and final PUD, a final plat, and special review use for the property formerly, well, previously called St. Louis Parish and Commercial Park. This one, they're kind of rebranded it for the purposes of the plat and PUD to St. Louis Parish and Boulder Innovation Campus. Let's see, there we go. A little bit of context for you. Again, the property, the entire property is outlined in red with the three kind of current owners defined here for you. It's at the northeast corner of Dillon Road and South 96th Street. This is, you know, relatively familiar, I would imagine, to all of you. We heard this a couple times over the summer related to the GDP amendment. But again, a little bit of background, collectively, the three parcels are roughly 52 acres. They were annexed in the 1996, 1997, initially zoned in agricultural. They did receive the PCZ zoning along with the St. Louis Parish and Commercial Park General Development Plan originally in 2004, agreements to provide integrated and coordinated development. First Amendment was approved in 2017. That was to allow religious institutions on the ascent parcel in Zone 2. You may remember, following that then, in 2018, the preliminary plat and preliminary PUD were approved for the ascent church piece. So, following that, ascent church purchased the property at 550 McCaslin, and the property is now under contract by the applicant United Properties. And then again, as previously mentioned, in 2020, you all recommended approval and City Council approved the Second Amendment, which was much more substantive than the first. It amended allowed uses and development standards. A little bit of back, you know, additional context here within the city, entire property outlined in yellow, again, showing the open space properties, and then CTC nearby. And again, from the general development plan, if we need to come back to this, but you all remember, it kind of pieced together this whole site in kind of a layered fashion, right? So we have the lower intensity, lower height uses, up fronting 96th Street with the buffer setbacks that were adopted, and then a little higher, a little more intense FAR, as the property gets deeper toward the railroad tracks toward the east. And again, the property tonight, under consideration for the PUD, is the property outlined in yellow, but the plat covers the entirety of the 51 acres, which is a requirement for, within the GDP and the agreement associated with that. So again, today, we're here to consider kind of two applications concurrently together. The first is the final plat that creates four lots, two parcels and two outlots, as well as a preliminary and final planned development and special review use. So with that, we're going to talk about a little bit about the plat first. This is substantially the same as the preliminary plat that you all approved in 2018. For the Gomes parcel on the north, that would create parcel 2. And then in the center, on the ascent piece, now United Properties, it creates lots 1 through 4, lot 1 being the larger lot at the rear, lots 2, 3, and 4, fronting South 96th. And then the Arch Diocese parcel is parcel 1. And then, as outlined in the general development plan and agreements, they will be dedicating with this plat, Outlet A and Outlet B, to meet partial public land dedication with the remainder to be cash in lieu. We'll talk more about that later. But again, substantially the same as the preliminary plat, although the easements and, you know, kind of those types of things are certainly different as the development concept has been amended on Lot 1. And so, we'll talk a little bit more about kind of the rationale for support for this later, but we did want to highlight that the preliminary plat, the approval of that, again, accounted for the public land dedication requirement. So, within the code, any property that's not platted has a minimum 12% dedication for commercial development. That would be 15% if this was for residential. So in this case, the 12% applies. So, we looked at kind of the overall requirement per lot. We factored in kind of their portion of Outlet A and B. We deleted out any area that had kind of any drainage easements. So there's some of these Outlet A and B, which don't meet the public land dedication requirement due to encumbrances for other reasons. So that's been deducted, kind of the remaining amount. We did receive current appraisals for this application. And so you can see kind of the total cash in lieu following removal of the outlots collectively for the entire site is $521,000. That would be if they were to make payment on this with this approval. At this point in time, again, Outlets A and B would be dedicated now, but the fee that the city would collect would just be for the United Properties, so roughly $160,000. The $158,91, and the remainder would be deferred if that deferral is carried forth on this final plat approval. So now, if we go into the PUD, again, PUD for this property contemplates development within two of these lots, as well as the associated infrastructure and access networks. So, South 96th Street here is at the bottom of your screen, north is to the left. Again, there's three lots within this plat that can accommodate development at this time. The first one being Lot 2, we'll talk a little bit about that first. So Lot 2 is contemplated for a convenience store and auto fueling station. There will be improvements along South 96th Street that were contemplated in the GDP, specifically the eight-foot detached sidewalk, the full movement intersection at this location that will be signaled, and that signal is warranted immediately. So that will be constructed at the first phase of development. Access, again, full movement access from 96th Street here, but this is a divided median, really intended to bring travelers kind of into the site this way, and then they can exit out through here. And then again, gas station canopy in this location here, and then the convenience store here. It does meet the parking and setback buffer. We'll talk a little bit about that, but the site design complies with the GDP as adopted by City Council. As we move further into the lot, this lot would be anticipated for, it's a spec building, so they don't have a final tenant yet, but it's an industrial building, which you may remember that general development plan was amended to allow industrial uses. However, it does need to meet commercial design standards. So again, we'll talk a little bit about that. But again, set further back in the lot, the primary facade fronts this north-south internal private drive. Detention is here in the back, and parking surrounds with, you know, drive aisles and service areas oriented toward the rear. And then, kind of deeper when we go, you may remember that we've talked about the trail that would be constructed throughout lots A and B. And this PUD contemplates grading and accommodation for the trail, but it would not be constructed by the applicant. So it would be constructed in the future by the city. So if we need to come back to the site for any reason, we can, but generally, this is the layout for these two properties. Here's an image of the exterior architecture for the convenience store. This would be the elevation that fronts South 96th Street. So it's clad with a stone material primarily. It's got accents here in Ephesus, and then some wood ornamental accents up around the roofline here, as well as a canopy over the window and entry areas. And this image here highlights the architecture for the industrial building toward the rear. Again, this has elevated design above and beyond what you typically see for this type of project out in the CTC. And so that, we'll get into compliance. Again, you know, first and foremost, this project needs to comply with all of the standards in the general development plan and is highlighted in the staff report. This application complies with all of those provisions. One element that came up that Planning Commission was not part of, but this was a City Council condition of approval, was that this, all of these properties would need to exceed CDDSG standards or minimums for dark sky lighting. And so we worked extensively with this applicant. You know, the industrial site, that's a lot easier to achieve. You know, those lighting needs are not, certainly not high, and their application met that out of the gate. But we went, we worked really hard on the gas station canopy and the lighting for that property, to really get it down to best practices for rural context for a gas station. And so we reviewed standards from the International Dark Sky Association and for other resources. And staff believes that the lighting levels associated with this convenience store are very low level when you factor in kind of what your more typical urban corridor gas station will be lit with, and meets all of the dark sky best practices. So we're comfortable with support on that. As far as remainder of CDDSG compliance, we're going to talk more in a little bit, but there are three waivers that are requested. So when we look at waivers, the first one is related to building perimeter landscaping. We see this from time to time, either due to geotechnical reports or just a desire by the applicant to not have a lot of water near foundations. In this case, that applies. And they are placing additional landscaping near the site entry areas. Staff supports the request and finds that, you know, additional landscaping at the entries is going to be more prominent, and we don't have concern with this waiver. The next waiver is related to street trees on the north-south internal private drive. Just due to the site configuration there, our CDDSG would require 20-foot-on-center street trees. Other sections, just for comparison, do allow a 40-foot-on-center tree. And they are proposing oak and maple trees, which, when fully grown, will have a good canopy and provide nice shaded protection for pedestrians there. And those 16 trees are being placed along the eastern elevation or the eastern property line near the trail corridor. And so staff finds that those 16 trees would improve the trail experience, so we support this request. The third waiver is related to the architectural requirement for building materials and design on all elevations, and is described further in the staff report. The east elevation does not provide the same design. You know, this side is oriented toward the trail corridor, and so while not immediately constructed, certainly this is planned for the future. And the policy within the CDDSG is that, you know, all four sides need to have high-quality architecture, and particularly when oriented to pedestrian ways. And so for that reason, staff finds that the architecture on this elevation is just as important as the others. And as an offset, they are providing eight additional trees. And staff finds that those eight additional trees are not enough to offset the negative impact. I do have the landscape planning can show you a little bit more about this. Generally, we are adding a condition of approval that the east elevation matched the other elevations. And so, just for a little bit of a comparison, I don't have renderings of all four sides, but you can see from an elevated design perspective, this elevation on the top is the elevation that fronts 96th Street, albeit, you know, inset. So it's a mix, you know, generally, it's a tilt-up concrete building, but it has higher level of detail at the entry areas. This is a wood kind of inside. It's metal, but it's going to appear as wood, so you'll see this from time to time. And then, kind of these more gridded portions here are a cementitious panel, so that will have definitely more architectural interest, as well as, you know, a lot of recess and bump outs. It certainly has more glazing than the back. And again, some wood panel, and then some metal canopy architectural detailing at the top, as well as over the doors and windows. And then, as you can see for comparison, you know, that wraps on the north and south sides, but the rear elevation is strictly the tilt-up concrete. Does have some minimal canopies over the man doors, but staff finds that it does not meet the same standard as the front of the building and the eight trees. We don't believe offset that negative impact, so we are recommending that condition of approval. Just for context, I have a blow up of the landscape plan, though. Just, I do want to highlight that generally, when mature, you know, where feasible, there are a few locations where there's drainage impacts and trees are, you know, kind of prohibitive. But for the most part, this entire east property line is treed with a mix of both evergreen and deciduous trees. And so, you know, while staff acknowledges that visibility, you know, will be minimized through the landscaping, we don't think the eight trees is enough of an offset. So the final component of this application is the special review use, which is required for the auto fueling station per the GDP uses. That is, we find that we support the request for the special reviews. Full analysis was in your staff report, but generally, we find that the use is consistent with a rural context area for auto-oriented uses and development patterns, contributes to the economic prosperity of the city. The site design is compatible, and this lot does not request any waivers from CDDSG standards or the general development plan. So it's fully compliant with the code, as well as meets all other criteria for special review uses. And again, we talked more about the plat, but when we analyzed the plat, we find it meets all the requirements in the municipal code. It does have the request for the modification related to the public land deferral. We just used the same evaluation criteria as 2018, where it will not alter the essential character. Does provide the public amenity through the dedication of the outlots. And again, we're just carrying forward the same recommendation from the preliminary plat. And so with that, we are recommending approval of this project for the plat, the PUD, and the special review use with a condition related to architecture. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and I know that the applicant also has a presentation for you when you're ready.
Great, thank you, Lisa. So at this time, we do have time for questions of staff, noting that afterwards, we will move to the applicant presentation where we'll have questions of the applicant. Commissioner Rice, Vice Chair Rice.
Lisa, the issue that caught my attention was one that wasn't really discussed much in your presentation, and I just had some questions about this deferral issue. I guess what we're asked for is this is in lieu of payments, and the idea is the other parcels that are not being developed at this time would have their in lieu payments, in lieu of payments deferred.
Yes.
And so, the first issue for me is that we're not even being asked to pass on this because there is no agreement yet, right? So.
So the specific terms of this, it was, it's part of their application, but the specific terms of deferral would be outlined in the subdivision agreement, which is, will be presented to City Council. So if that's something you feel like you would like to see the specific terms, we haven't completed that yet?
Yeah. Well, I'm just saying that I don't know how we could pass judgment on an agreement when we don't even know what the agreement is. So I just note that because I don't know whether the deferral is from now until the end of the world, or whether the deferral is for, you know, a set period of time. So that's just the first part. The second thing that troubled me about this was that it's being suggested that we should handle this under the subdivision modification criteria that's set forth at Section 162403B.
Yeah.
And I have to be honest in saying that I read all those criteria, and it seems to me that we're trying to put a square peg in a round hole here because this, you know, that modification has to do with design.
Right.
And it's all the criteria are design-oriented, and so it seems to me that we're trying to push this through on something that doesn't even apply to the circumstance that we have at issue. So are there other alternatives?
That's a really great question. I'm not aware, and I would let Director's or Carol weigh in if he can think of something else, but really, you know, our code sets forth that process to approve any revision from, you know, kind of the subdivision, you know, subdivision requirements. And I agree with you. I don't think it was, that language was drafted to accommodate something of this nature, but I don't know that we have another mechanism.
Yeah.
To approve.
Right, and I'll just add on to that. So I think when we went through the preliminary, there was a clear request for deferral. And that was a little bit different application, but it was also very similar from a phasing standpoint. You know, that was with the church, and now the church parcel's been turned into the industrial. And again, there was a clear request with the preliminary that was, you know, it was discussed through Planning Commission and City Council, and there was approval, but there wasn't a criteria set to it. So as we were looking at the final, you know, our ordinance does not allow, you know, there's very clear language in our subdivision ordinance that requires this to be made at final plat. So we didn't see how it could be deferred without a formal waiver in our analysis of the final application based on the code language. So the only thing that we could see that would permit that would be through this modification. I would say that, to try, and again, while we haven't drafted the final agreement language, because we typically don't draft until we get to City Council, and maybe this, if you get comfortable with this concept, maybe this needs to be put on the record in this hearing, is our intent from staff standpoint is that you basically have these three major parcels. They would be paying their fee in lieu for this middle parcel. For the first final plat for either of the other two parcels, that would trigger the fee in lieu. So, as Lisa's brought up, that blue parcel on the left, if you go back to the map, right, anytime there was any first subdivision, you know, the first subdivision on parcel 2 would trigger their dedication. The first subdivision within parcel 3, I guess it says, is that parcel 3, that would trigger that. And in full, and we would get current cost estimates, or sorry, current land values of current appraisals to determine the value. So if that takes place one year from now or five years from now, we would ask for current appraisals, and we would collect the fee in lieu at that time. So that's our intent with, as staff. I think if the applicant has a different idea, that should be put on the record. And alternatively, if you want to see it in writing, we could certainly try to bring that back at a continued hearing.
I don't have any trouble with the deferral, but I'm just concerned about the procedure we're following. And I want to make sure we do it, do it right, for all the reasons you just mentioned, Rob.
Yeah. I did check the record, and the modification process is how we did it in 2018. So it's, you know, it's the similar process that we contemplated at a preliminary. And again, not aware of another mechanism.
Okay, those are my questions.
Okay.
Thank you, Vice Chair Rice. Do we have any additional questions of staff from the commissioners? Commissioner Howe.
Hi, Lisa. I'm trying to work out in my mind where the, where the stoplight is going to be placed along 96th Street, and how close, because there's another stoplight, correct me if I'm wrong, on 96th and Dillon.
Yeah, so the stoplight, let me go back to kind of.
I think I know where it is on the map, but I'm trying to think, when I drive that road, I mean, I want to make sure it's not too close, because I think the. road, I mean, I, I want to make sure it's not too close, because I think the, one of the original goals is to keep this kind of rural, and if we have it too close, we start to think about maybe a lot of congestion and...
Yeah, absolutely, very fair question. So the stoplight is right kind of here, this primary intersection, it's roughly about a quarter mile from 96th and Dillon. This certainly was, so we did have a traffic engineer evaluate this, they evaluated stacking and queuing and impacts to signal timing. Public Works looked closely at this, we met a couple times with a traffic consultant, and Public Works staff was comfortable that these signals, that the addition of this signal, I mean, while certainly you're going to have added traffic, you know, as a virtue of this development and by the utilization of the signal, that it shouldn't, you know, cause negative impacts overall to the traffic, you know, to the traffic within the corridor. So it's, you know, it's kind of, it's not quite the same distance, but it's, you know, similar distance to maybe the traffic light at Pier, some, you know, across the railroad tracks on the other side. And generally, you kind of want to keep traffic signals at least a quarter mile away from one another. If they're going to operate a little more independently, once you get them closer to that, then it can be a little more problematic. I want to check on one thing, their traffic engineer may be on the call, I don't know that he is, but the applicant might be able to speak a little bit about that as well, but we did look at that closely with Public Works staff. Steve, you're muted, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Deal.
Yeah, thank you. Lisa, just a point of clarification, with everything that's happened with the properties, is it still zoned PCZD?
Yes.
And, and that also entails, I think there was an agreement between the property owners that they would develop in a coordinated fashion?
Yes, so you remember with the general development plan and the subsequent agreement that goes with that, the property owners agreed initially in 2004, and that's been carried forth this whole time, that they would provide coordinated development. Staff doesn't interpret that to mean simultaneous development, but we do, you know, we do agree that it needs to be coordinated. And so in addition to this plat and PUD, there's a phasing plan that's, you know, described, and it outlines kind of who is going to, who's going to build what infrastructure and when, so we can kind of see into the future a little bit. The subdivision agreement that Commissioner Rice was referring to as it relates to the public land dedication will also have requirements within that agreement that the property owners have covenants and an owners' association or some other structure for maintenance and upkeep and obligations for who develops what and who maintains what over the years. And so the subdivision agreement does include that requirement, and the applicant intends to, to provide that. So really, the subdivision agreement will provide the mechanism through their owners' association and covenants for all of those provisions. So staff believes that this is meeting that coordinated development through those kind of subs, you know, through those more peripheral agreements and things.
So, I, understand the, the covenants and the owners' association, I guess, what's staff's perspective on the fact that this is kind of developing the middle parcel? And I guess how, when we, when we see the other two being developed, I mean, can we, do we see that happening in a coordinated fashion under this kind of...
Yeah, so I think when we, when we look at it, we look at a couple things. Are we providing logical access and connections, you know, kind of into and throughout the site? So when, you know, if we were looking at this all at one time, or if we were looking at this kind of piecemeal, we would want to make sure that access is facilitated in a logical manner, and we believe that the access design here, for one, it, it meets the GDP kind of for the overall access intent. So you've got, you know, the, the access on the, the north side of Lot 1 and Lot, Lot 2, and then the primary access in the center that's signalized, and then the right-in, right-out further below. The traffic study, again, you know, kind of contemplated access into kind of the final build-out of this, and are these access points going to be able to accommodate the completed intended development, and we believe it will. The utilities, certainly, one of the things that, you know, when they get to civil design that Public Works will be requiring is that, you know, not only just are utilities provided, you know, kind of to this site, but the connections are logical into the future. So, you know, stubbing out to a property line or making sure that the final utility design is cohesive, so that the city doesn't have, you know, kind of maintenance, or, or the property owners don't have kind of maintenance issues with that in the future, that really all of this is looped properly and is going to, you know, function collectively from a utility perspective. You know, again, we've got the outlet A and B, which is kind of a, you know, collective thing that provides the trail connection. So those are the types of things that staff looked at when we evaluated kind of this one application, as well as the phasing plan and consistency with the GDP, just to make sure that those connections, you know, kind of where this ends, everything else can connect into it in a logical fashion in the future.
Yeah, I had a question about the, the cash in lieu, and is that, is that a property owner's discretion of what they want to dedicate land-wise versus cash?
No, so it's, it happens as a dialogue initially between the Parks and Open Space Departments and their boards and commissions to see if for each particular property, does the city want land dedication, or does the city, would the city rather have fee in lieu? So say you've got a small property, maybe two acres, but it's not platted, you know, does it make sense to take in, you know, 10,000 square feet? And does the city want to maintain something in there? Or is it better just to take the cash and, and put those funds, you know, to better use elsewhere throughout the city? So really, it's a case-by-case basis, but the code gives us discretion as a city, kind of on how we want this to be met.
So on, on this percentage, or I guess this separation between cash and dedication, I guess who, who were, where did that decision come from?
Sure, so initially, I believe it was carried forth, you know, kind of with the original intent of the GDP to dedicate outlots A and B for the purposes of these trails. So when you look at the property history, you know, that's really been the intent of this first, I think from kind of its early days with that A and B were the, kind of the property within here that the city was interested to meet that public land dedication, and the remainder would be cash in lieu. The city wasn't interested in additional land dedicated within this development. So, you know, we didn't really revisit that, we talked a little bit about it at GDP, but really, we're carrying forth that policy from kind of the original 2004 approval.
I guess the only other ask would be the traffic study, and then you mentioned the phasing plan?
Yeah. Sorry, I can't hear you all of a sudden. There we go. Oh, there we go.
Okay.
Kinda, you're kind of coming and cutting in and out.
Probably my internet.
You died, I'm sorry, not right now.
All right, I'll come back to my question.
Share, Brian, I see you're muted.
I have a question while we're waiting.
I think you're up, Commissioner Williams.
Okay. I'm wondering about the timeline for the trail, the trail connection that the city is going to be responsible for.
Yeah, so it's not in any current CIP plan for the next five-year budget, you know, until we typically have land dedicated, it's hard to put something on a CIP list, you know, until we actually have the land. And so it's not on any current list, I don't know that it's a trail connection that the city will go out and immediately construct. It requires additional city funds to connect into the Coal Creek Trail to the north, and so there's some challenges with that related to crossing Coal Creek, they would need, you know, we would need a bridge, as well as we're still kind of figuring out final alignments for any future connections related to the former ConocoPhillips property. So we just want to make sure that, you know, the direction for these trails, that we're thinking kind of holistically, but no, it's not in any current budget.
Okay, and not even beyond five years, or you don't even...
Well, we reevaluate it every, you know, two years, I believe, so once we get the land, and, you know, then I think adding it to a CIP budget certainly is, you know, a different, it's a different story then, right? So, but ultimately, that would be recommendations from our open space advisory boards and other, other boards as far as that goes.
Okay, I would just mention, Lisa, that it's in the transportation master plan, so this connection was discussed and contemplated, whether it was the preferred route or a good route, considering all of the other planning efforts taking place, and it, it is in the TMP, but not in a current, in the current six-year CIP.
Okay, that's thoughtful, very helpful, thanks.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Moline.
Yeah, thanks, I have just a couple, and one of them, recognizing that, Lisa, recognizing that the east side of the building is different than the other four sides, because it has all the, I don't know, truck bays, and yeah, I mean, when we're saying that we're expecting a different, or that we're expecting a similar architectural treatment, it wouldn't have to be, I mean, it wouldn't have to be identical necessarily to what we're seeing on, on the front and sides, but just, we want, you're, you're asking to see more than, than what's been proposed.
Yeah, I don't think there's any expectation that they reconfigure their site, you know, to, to remove all the truck bays, right? That's how this site's going to function.
Yeah.
I do agree, you know, I do think, you know, the site is going to be visible from 96th, so it's not like we'd want to flip it 180, you know, so it, I don't, that's not certainly what not staff, you know, staff's not expecting that. But from a materials and just architectural, yes, that...
Okay, I, I appreciate that, I, I agree that the, that it's important to, A, comply with the guidelines, and then, B, address the visibility from the future pedestrian trail. So I just, I was just wanting to hear a little bit more of comparison, recognizing that this, this back elevation is going to be different than, than the other three sides, so. And then maybe could you just do a bit of a review for me on subdivision agreements and the, so, so if this deferral information and the length of time, I really appreciated Commissioner Rice's discussion about this, that stuff would be, get contained in the subdivision agreement, and then, how does, that gets approved at the time the final plat is approved, or is it a, is it a condition of the plat approval that's kind of a post-approval condition, or?
No, that's a great question. So we will take the draft form of the subdivision agreement to city council. Typically, you know, what current staff does on that is that non-substantive elements could change, maybe, say. So part of the subdivision agreement includes provisions for cost of improvements for public infrastructure and what those guarantees are.
Yeah.
And so, you know, we would, we, we include a draft cost of improvements with the subdivision agreement to council, but we also recognize, you know, sometimes cost of improvements change when the civil construction drawings are approved, right? So that can change, but kind of the substantive core of the agreement gets adopted by city council and can't be amended later. So the terms for public land deferral, which, again, a planning commission has recommendations on those terms, you know, kind of differently than how Directors of Carra describe them, or please, it's, just because we didn't bring the draft to you doesn't mean that a planning commission, you know, we would certainly be interested in hearing your perspective on that, because it is part of the request. And then it gets recorded on the property, so it runs with the land and is binding upon the property owners, you know, should they consent and sign the agreement, right? So...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, that's very helpful.
Yeah.
Uh-oh, Steve's muted again. Okay, sorry about that, thank you, Commissioner Moline. Commissioner Deal, did you have a follow-on question at this time?
You're muted intentionally right now, maybe try and unmute.
So I had the same problem with the space part, there we go.
Okay, you guys can hear me, okay?
Yep.
I was going to ask, can we put the traffic study and the phasing document into the public record?
Yes, absolutely, it's part of the application, and yes, definitely.
Okay.
All right, do we have any additional commissioner questions of staff?
One other note, real quick, the phasing plan is, will be adopted as an exhibit to the subdivision agreement, so the phasing plan actually is part of the obligations, you know, of the property owner, and so it's, you know, it will be captured in an official manner.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Deal, did you have anything additional? No, okay, thank you. Commissioner Howe?
Hi, Lisa, again, one of the issues that we had last time when it, when we discussed it was the setback, and that was a little bit of a hot topic. And so I'm looking at the proposed retail and 96th Street. Can you, I know that the GDP proposes a 55-foot building setback.
Yep.
Can you, you walk me through where we're at with this proposed, because, because I see the, I see where the building is, but I think that there's, there's gas pumps in front of that.
Yeah.
Walk me through that.
Sure, let me pull up the site plan for you. So, Planning Commission, when we brought it to you, we had a condition of approval related to the building setback, you all carried that forth. City council, though, adopted the applicant's preferred design for the GDP, which required the 55-foot building setback, but did allow the 30-foot parking setback. And so this application complies with that, so you can kind of see here on the screen, this line right here is the 55-foot building setback, and so you can see this canopy for the gas stations is in line with that 55-foot setback. And then the 30-foot parking setback line is here, their, their drive aisle extends very slightly in there, but as we discussed with GDP, you know, it's really the intent is to keep that parking outside of there, and so the parking is certainly well outside of that 30-foot setback, and so staff finds that this complies with the setbacks in the GDP. Does that answer that? Is that what you were looking for?
Yeah, so, so you're saying that it complies with the 50, that, well, the building is setback 55 feet?
The canopy is 55, and then the building is, you know, much further beyond.
Right, right.
Then that's the face, kind of that outward face of the roof of the canopy, so kind of the closest structure to the street is 55 feet.
Okay. And then what's the, what are the expected tenants, maybe there's, they don't, haven't gotten that far for Lot 4 and Lot 3?
I'll let the applicant answer that, we haven't heard of any prospective tenants yet, so I don't know if they have that or if they can share yet.
And, and these setbacks would be, would be applicable to those tenants as well?
Yeah, so these setbacks apply to all of the lots running South 96th Street, so, right, Lot 4 in this case meets that, and then lots 2 and 3 will need future PUDs, so you would see those again before any development, and when again, we've confirmed that they meet those requirements.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, so I was going to also ask about Lot 3 and 4. Are they included in any of the phasing for the subdivision?
So, yeah, I mean, this is kind of a multi-layered, it's, this subdivision amendment and this subdivision plat will probably have subsequent amendments kind of as development comes in. Certainly, the subdivision agreement as future development happens and what those obligations are. So again, the PUD contemplates, you know, kind of the access improvements, and the subdivision agreement will include any requirements for infrastructure, so it will capture the, you know, anything that's getting constructed around lots 2 and 3, but no specific development internal to those lots is proposed yet.
For 3 and 4, you mean?
Yeah, 2 and 3, I think.
Four, four, four is the currently...
Four is the convenience.
Oh, sorry, okay.
That's okay, I know, I just got it, it's okay. I know what you meant.
Okay, but currently, this is part of the plat, but there, it's not part of the PUD.
Right, they'll need new PUDs to allow development.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any additional commissioner questions of staff?
Do you have any additional commissioner questions of staff? If not, at this time, we'll move into the applicant presentation, please. Introduce yourself and welcome back.
Yeah. Well, um, hi, Alicia Reimer. Grateful that we're here again this evening to present the PUD to you. Um, I think Megan's going to share the presentation, Lisa, and Jim's going to start, um, out, and then I'll speak, so.
Sure. Sorry, who did you say was gonna do the presentation? Okay, gotcha.
So, if you could give her permission, and then I think Jim's gonna speak first. So, Jim, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Um, you guys got me okay? Hope you can hear me. Um, well, hey, thank you for having us back again. Oh, my gosh, I, this is, we, we've talked about this property a lot, I feel like with you guys, so. Uh, but thank you for having us back. And my name's Jim Candy, representing Ascent Church at 550 South McCaslin Boulevard in Lewisville. Um, and I just, I'll make a couple of just quick comments. First of all, um, this has been, uh, my first ever experience with, uh, property development and, uh, perhaps my last, we'll see. But, um, it's, it's been a real challenge. I, I've spent about three years, um, maybe more, Lisa, geez, I, I'm trying to think of how long this has been, um, working through this. And really, the challenge of the property, you guys have hit on it tonight. You've hit all the major things. Um, there's a challenge around, there's been challenges around ownership. How do we get different owners, you know, coordinating together? How do you get sewer running in the right spot, water being, you know, going across the back of the Catholic, um, lot? Like, all those things have taken countless hours, uh, to coordinate. So, I thought Lisa said it really well. Yeah, it's not simultaneous, but it is coordinated, uh, for sure. And I just want to make sure you guys understand that it's been a labor, uh, to get it there. Um, infrastructure has been a real challenge. Um, I think we've said before, I, and Alicia can correct me, it's about two and a half million dollars, um, of infrastructure costs. So, that's why this property has been such a challenge to get moving forward is because, um, no one owner, you know, because nobody, we're not all gonna do it at the same time. No one owner is able to just pop in and do that on their own, really until now, uh, with United Properties, um, coming forward. There's been challenges around the lots and the sizes, and that's, you know, part of the setback, and how do we fit things everywhere? So, a ton of work that Lisa and the staff has done, um, with us on that. And then, you guys hit the, the public land dedication piece. Um, and really, you know, we brought that last time because that's such an important topic. Uh, because there's been such an infrastructure burden, we brought that. And, um, I believe it was in September of 2018, both the, uh, planning commission and the council, uh, saw the wisdom in saying, yeah, we're gonna allow, um, this to be phased. And so, I appreciate, uh, your questions on that. And, um, it is the road we've had to be working on, uh, for this time. So, long road of attempts, uh, to really try to make this a great property for the city. I think we've finally got there. I want you, uh, to know and say thank you to the staff. They've worked really hard on this. And thank you as a planning commission. Uh, you know, the last time we came with this, a few months back, you guys had a lot of input, and I think you really made this stronger. Um, so I think we're coming tonight with a stronger, uh, application, um, that I think's in an ideal position for finally, right, to, to see something approved here. Uh, so I hope and urge you to, um, approve this tonight, uh, you know, along with the, um, staff's recommendation. So, uh, appreciate the time. I'm gonna turn it over to United Properties now and, and let them take it from here.
Great, thanks, Jim. Um.
Still not able to share my screen.
All right, let's see. I'm gonna give you a lot of control here. Let's see.
Well, you're the host now.
Yeah, it's all the, all the permissions.
Also gone mute on us, Ms. Turner. I'm not sure.
Do you want me to try another member of your team, Alicia, or are we?
Um, yeah, I, we can, I guess, try me. Let me, um, let me.
Oh, I don't have control now. Shoot.
Oh, you have to give instructions verbally, since you're the host.
Now Megan has all the control.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay, um.
Please make one of us a co-host again. Hopefully, she comes back.
Lisa, there are two Megan Turners on here. Do we know which one?
No, that could be an issue.
Right, and the second, the second existence of you is muted.
Yeah.
So, if, if you're using kind of two different channels on your computer to do video and audio for different logins, that might be the issue of the sound, though we did hear you earlier.
Yeah, I see she's on. I'm not.
Yeah. Sure. I can't hear you. Can you make me co-host again?
Yeah, how, how do I do that, Lisa?
Oh, if you just click on the, the three dots next to, on the upper right part of my.
But we could hear you now.
Yeah, we could hear you now.
Okay, well, let me try. Yeah, it's still disabled. Um, the three dots, I apologize.
So, you know what I did is I, I made the, whatever the one that's not with your screen is who I made host. So, are you able to give that? Is that your phone?
Um, no, it's not my phone.
Um.
Well, you.
Computer?
Are you logged in twice?
I don't believe that I am. Did someone log in under you, maybe?
Oh, yeah, you're on here twice. Did you share your invite with someone else?
It might be, it might be Kevin. Kevin, could you hang up?
Don't hang up, don't hang up, don't hang up, don't hang up.
Oh, don't hang up.
No, don't hang up.
Although you.
He has full control of the meeting.
Yes, he just unmuted himself, though.
Yeah, so whoever that is, if they could, um, they have control. So, if they can go up to the three dots on the upper right part of the, my thing, as well as the other one with real Megan.
So, Lisa, I don't, I don't have three dots in my.
I don't.
You have to hover your, first, or over Lisa's picture, and then the three dots will show up.
Sorry, thank you, Rob.
Over Lisa's picture?
Lisa, it's Kevin. So, I see the three dots. What do I do?
So, click on that, and then you should get a drop down that says make co-host.
Make co-host, yes.
Great, so click that, and then do the same thing over Megan Turner with the, 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 the one she's, the, the box.
My picture image.
Yeah. Sorry, everyone. Thanks for the.
Make her co-host?
Yep, so Megan and I will both be co-host. So, Megan, now you should have ability to share your screen.
There we go. I think that worked. Thank you, sorry about that.
Sorry for the confusion on that. I didn't recognize the two of you.
No, apologies for that. This, um, should share here. Let me know when he can see my screen.
All good.
All right, Alicia, take it away. Thanks, everyone.
Okay, you get, so we're grateful to be here again this evening to take kind of the phase one PUD, um, development for United Properties in front of you guys for hopeful approval. Um, so Megan, you wanna move to the next slide, I think? So, this is existing images of the site. And as Jim kind of indicated, it's been sitting like this for a while and been quite a challenge. Um, went through two different developers, and we're now the third, trying to get this thing across the finish line. And so, we're excited to finally be able to kind of regentrify this corner and, and get it going for the city. Next slide, Megan. So, we came in front of you guys, um, this summer, bringing the GDP amendment and, in front of you, and kind of the big items that we were, you know, here to discuss, um, was obviously the setback, which city council, um, supported the approval, um, with enhancements. And so, we had talked about that time, that we're actually doing two phases of development here. Phase one being what's in front of you today, which is the ascent parcel that includes the, um, 100,000 square foot roughly industrial building in the back, and then the 711 convenience store on lot two. Um, you asked about lot threes and fours. So, we are under contract on lot three with a car wash user, and we're actively marketing lot, um, four with no tenants, um, at this time, but we're continuing to market and hope that as things, um, progress and industrial comes on and we move through the process, that we will land that, um, tenant or that third lot fairly quickly. We are also, um, working with city staff right now and hope to be coming in front of you guys fairly soon here with the phase two piece of our development, which includes a portion of the arch diocese piece. And so, um, but we are here kind of tonight to discuss phase one. So, um, development, part kind of overview, our perspectives, uh, we think that we're gonna be bringing a lot, uh, to not only allowing this development to finally move forward, but we'll be bringing a lot of benefits to the city with the development of phase one, which includes like 96th Street improvements. As Lisa discussed, we're going to be adding some additional lanes, a right turn lane, curb and gutter, and an eight-foot detached sidewalk, um, and tree lawn along 96th corridor there in the, in front of the site, as well as a traffic signal for that full movement intersection. Um, at this plat approval, we will be dedicating all three property owners, we'll be dedicating the 3.105 acres of, uh, land on the eastern property line, which will allow for the city to finally move forward on building that trail connection or having the land established to do so. And we're also, we'll be constructing, uh, with our development, a split rail wooden fence kind of along that between the railroad and our property, as well as long as enhanced landscaping. Um, United Properties is prepared to pay our cash-in-lue fee for phase one at the time of, you know, plat approval, which is the 158,092. We are asking for the deferral of the balance of that for right now, and that's mainly just because, uh, Gamez, uh, Adrian Gamez, which owns the northern parcel, as well as the arch diocese, dude does not have the money to, to front right now, um, to pay those cash-in-lue fees, and they intend to pay those when they develop. And so, um, as we discussed, it's a little complicated, just because we do have three separate property owners with three different, you know, three separate financial situations. Um, and obviously, um, ability to move forward on that. So, that's kind of the request for the deferral. We feel that this, uh, the retail development actually fulfills a much of a need for food and convenience in the area for the Colorado Tech Center, as well as the industrial tenants that we will be bringing to the area and the commuter traffic along 96th Street. There's obviously sales and property tax generation that will be created, plus we're anticipating approximately about 250 jobs between the, the phase, the phases. Next slide. I do want to talk just briefly because it was brought up by a couple of the commissioners. So, here's kind of the overall, um, very conceptual development plan of what it would look like, um, when all phases kind of are developed out, keeping in mind that the arch diocese and Gamez's parcel was actually very conceptual at this point. Um, this can coincide with our traffic study. So, the traffic study that we did is kind of factoring in all three phases of the development, um, at complete build-out. And so, the access points have already been kind of predetermined and established through that, um, and that will set the stage with the phase one. So, with phase one of the construction, we will be constructing the full movement that you can see here, um, with the, the traffic signal. So, that will go in with the industrial building and the 711 convenience store. And then, we are also constructing the most northern three-quarter, uh, movement into the site. And so, that'll be a right-in, right-out, three-quarter turn with a left turn pocket out in 96th Street. And then, with our phase two development, which will happen later, we'll install this an additional right-in, right-out access point. And then, long-term, Arch Diocese will have a right-in, right-out access point to Dillon Street that will be constructed at a later date with their development plans. And so, you can kind of see the spacing here. Hopefully, that gives you a good visual of where the traffic signal will actually be in relation to Dillon. And I believe it's, it's, you know, well over, like Lisa said, a quarter of a mile, a thousand feet, um, away from the Dillon intersection. And our traffic engineer is on the call, and he is prepared to answer any questions. There, during the traffic study, um, we worked kind of profusely with staff and really evaluated the functionality of that signal in close proximity or to the intersection and how the stacking would work with our development at full build-out and, and through the multiple phases. So, um, if we need to get into that a little bit more, we can certainly have him be better suited to address those questions. But hopefully, that at least gives you guys a clear picture into that. Next slide. So, one of the things that we did look at was important to us and to staff was to create some kind of multi-modular, you know, development, right? So, we are working with, um, obviously catering to the track that will be generated in the trucks, but we also wanted to make sure, uh, that we were catered to the pedestrians. And so, with this, um, along 96th Street, as Lisa had kind of indicated, and you can see here, we are and will be constructing an eight-foot detached sidewalk with an eight-foot tree lawn. And, um, in the east-west private road, so the entryways into the, into the site, we'll be continuing now the six-foot detached sidewalk that will be constructed with the first phase of our development. And so, we've made that sidewalk a little bit bigger and detached it because we had the room and space to do so. And that will kind of allow for the continuation of both bikes as well as, you know, pedestrians into the development. And then, those connect to sidewalks that will, uh, take you up to the building itself. And we have striped pedestrian, uh, connections within between each of the lots. And we'll have a five-foot attached sidewalk, um, on the interior between the industrial buildings and the retail, um, along there. And that drive aisle will actually, um, include a three-foot shoulder on each side, which could be effectively used as a bike lane if, if necessary, um, and create some space there. And we also, as it discussed, are doing the dedication that for the future trail that will be built in the split rail fence along that eastern property edge. So, we feel, um, that we, you know, are creating some synergies for customers and pedestrians, as well as the re, the industrial workers and the retailers to kind of move back and forth and, and benefit from using those amenities. Next slide.
Quick, quick, quick question on that.
Sure.
Uh, is that to scale? Because it looks like there's a lot of green space behind the building.
It, yeah, it's fairly to scale. So, this is modeled up in 3D from our actual plan. So, the detention pond is behind, um, the industrial building there on that eastern property line, and is fairly massive because we're also, you know, taking and accepting Gamez's part detention through that area. So, it is to scale. I mean, there'll be quite a bit of green space between us and the railroad, as well as the future trail. So, in the landscaping, uh, design, we did, you know, and, and so, part of the reason for justification of the setbacks, you know, for, um, the GDP amendment was that we would do enhanced landscaping. And we, we heard staff, and we also heard you guys, as well as, um, take seriously the intent of the comprehensive plan is to keep this kind of, maintain this area as a rural entryway right into the city. And so, we really worked hard through landscaping to try to create this visual balance between the rural landscape to the west, um, and transition it as we move from west to east to more of a commercial-type space. Um, and we did this through kind of planting material selection and placement. So, one of the things that we did here to be mindful of the open space and making that transition is, um, we looked to try to create a more open space or natural vegetation, um, in the tree lawn itself. So, we did that by really being mindful of placing trees. So, we're cut, kind of clustering those trees, which is um, something you see more in kind of a natural growth habitat. And we were very selective of selecting a lot of ornamental grasses and shrubs that you typically see more in open space type, type material. And so, we placed a lot of those in the entryways as well as, um, in the tree lawn. And then, as we trans, you transfer and move, you know, west or east through the development, we transferred to kind of more of a commercial lies type of planting material and design. Uh, we were very mindful of our placement of the, um, plantings that, you know, what sizing they're going to be and clustered them, um, along kind of the parking area, just to shield the dispensers, as well as shield the parking area. And we picked different color and variety, so it draws the visual eye to it. We also enhanced and increased the landscaping buffers at the entryways. So, though we're required, you know, have a 30-foot setback, that's an actually 82-feet landscaping buffer there, um, at the entryway. So, that it kind of wraps around the drive aisles, as well as the parking. So, that kind of becomes the focal point. So that kind of becomes the focal point for, for individuals and not the paving itself. So we feel like that it really softens the, you know, the, the paving and draws attention to kind of the landscaping area and allows for that transition to take place to maintain that rural entryway feel. We also did some enhancements. So we increased the buffer on the entryways. We added a lot of additional tree shrubs and grasses than what was required by code. We also increased our, we, we put 58 additional linear feet of building perimeter landscaping that code does not require. And then we added a seating kind of landscape, a seating area amenity on the south side of the building there that you can see a couple of benches and a lot of different planting materials and trees so that it softens that and creates a space for other workers as well as, you know, customers to, to eat and, you know, and sit and utilize that space. So those are kind of some different techniques that we use to really, you know, create that rural entryway edge as well as meet the enhanced landscaping requirements. Next slide. We also went with kind of an enhanced architecture here. So again, to kind of continue on with the rural entryway feel, we added a kind of faux wood truss feature on the front of the building and pitched the roof and, you know, doing a different mix of, of materials to give this a nice earth tone and set the stage for, for the development. We also pitched the canopy or provided a mansored canopy and are wrapping the canopy columns so that it is consistent with the building just to give a nice, you know, look, clean look and entrance into the city. As far as the lighting goes, you know, we did have a condition, you know, to meet, actually be lower than, you know, CDSU standards. And so we worked really hard with Lisa, as she said, to kind of lower lighting levels. And so effectively, we've kind of reduced them to half of what we would typically see on a standard 7-Eleven here to meet and be below dark sky requirements. We are using a full focus cutoff LED lighting. It is downlit and directed at the area that is intended to light with zero wash off the property line as well as have reduced those foot candles down to a low level that gets us there. And so we need it to be safe and inviting, but we also, you know, want it to be, meet those requirements. So here's kind of a visual of exactly what it will look like at night. Keeping in mind that this does not take into consideration and the photometrics, photometrics do not capture the enhanced landscaping that were there that will also be a mitigating factor as well. Next slide. Did you turn? Megan, did you? Okay, so I'm going to turn it over now.
7-Eleven.
Yeah, now I can. So I'm going to turn it over now to Chase. He is with 7-Eleven and he's just going to talk for a minute about the company and the interior and the product assortment of the store. And then we'll turn it over to Megan to, to finish up with industrial.
Thanks, Alicia. Thank you all for having me. 7-Eleven's been very excited about the potential to go at this location for the past three or so years. So appreciate the potential opportunity here. So 7-Eleven is the leader in the convenience store industry. When you hear that and know our brand, you may think of a, a large corporation, which is true. But in a sense, here in Colorado, we really operate as a small company. It's really only three other, two other real estate folks, one construction manager, and then a few operations folks. We work very closely with our development partners. United Property is a true trusted partner, giving us the opportunity to take down a, a site where other competitors or whoever it may be, may not have the opportunity to, given they have other capabilities with, you know, the industrial component here. So we're very grateful again to have the opportunity here. So the majority of our stores are franchise stores, which means they're operated as a small business, by a small business owner, excuse me. And then the franchisee will then embed him or herself into the local community, whether it be businesses, schools, communities, you name it. They, they, you know, like to interact with everyone. They go through intensive training to, to make sure they're doing that and not just running a store and collecting, you know, money. Other ways that the, the franchisee gets embedded into the community, we have Project A Game, which is a grant that the franchisee provides to nearby schools and/or nonprofits, as well as provides food and drink to community events or meetings like this whenever we're all together in one building, whether it be food or drink. And then kind of moving on to the, the product side of things, 7-Eleven, we really pride ourselves on the daily fresh food. So we have a lot of offerings, you know, sandwiches, fruit, salads, baked goods, meals ready to eat. I believe this location will really help support the community as a, as a small grocery store, providing fuel and other services as well, since this area doesn't provide those amenities currently, as well as commuters in the air, commuters up along 96th as well as along Dillon. And we just really appreciate, again, appreciate the opportunity for the potential to go here and, you know, looking forward to the process. And hopefully we can all meet and, and be together in, you know, the coming months. Thank you for the time.
Thanks, Chase. And thanks, Alicia. Hi, everyone. I'm Megan Turner. Nice to see you all again here virtually. Thanks for your patience through Zoom. Technology hiccups are still happening clearly on everyone's part, mine especially. So our, I'm the Industrial Director of Development here in the Denver office. And we have been working very closely, obviously with staff and Alicia and her retail team with the 7-Eleven group as well on this first phase PUD. So as Alicia had mentioned, we're kind of coming to you in, in two phases here. This today, tonight is for PUD approval on our first phase, which is building one. It's shown on the north side of the building here, kind of that middle section that Ascent owns. But we are also coming in later this spring with our phase two of the project, which is the L-shaped building that you see on the right side of the screen on the southern portion of the property. So this first building that we're presenting here is a hundred thousand square foot industrial flex building. This view is, is from 96th Street, kind of looking north and east. You see the, the western elevation there that I'll show in more detail here. Looks very similar to, to what Lisa had shown previously. This is the southwest corner elevation of the building. This is a concrete tilt-up building. We worked really closely and, and, and hard with Lisa and Rob and our architect to make sure that this industrial building meets, you know, the, the commercial design standards, which is above and beyond, you know, the industrial design guidelines, which majority of CTC is within. So we have kind of come up with a collective plan here that, that includes some additional articulation on the building that is not standard for an industrial building. We are planning to install some fiber cement board siding on top of the, the concrete tilt here. So if you can kind of see on this elevation, this is a 3D rendering so that the colors look a little bit different just based on lighting. But you can see in here, there's, there's some articulation in the panels. That's the fiber cement board siding that really will give the building some depth and kind of some variability rather than just the concrete. But 60% of our panels are articulated from the base parapet elevation. 21% of the panels are articulated from the base building plane. And then the big, the big piece was that 40% of the elevation consists of materials other than just textured concrete. So that's kind of the above and beyond piece that we, you know, needed to meet the commercial design guidelines. And this is the side of the building that faces the street. You know, it's going to be very visible to the retail tenants. And also, obviously, we want, you know, a nice presence for our office. Typically, the office is on either corner of these industrial buildings. So this side of the building will really kind of feel like an office entrance area. So kind of moving into discussion on one of the variances of the waivers that we're requesting here. This is not totally to scale, but it's close. I'm sure our architect and engineer looking at this, I just overlaid it on a Google aerial here so you can kind of see what's behind the building to give a little bit of context. So this, this area here, this large green area that was pointed out previously is, is actually a detention area. And I'll show that more clearly on the next slide, but that's detention here. We have the railroad that is running this way here. And then on the other side, on the east side of the railroad is CTC. And these are the back of the commercial buildings that are there. So really, we have, you know, the truck court area, the, some, some detention and, and then landscaping, the eventual trail, which will be on the east side of this landscape, and then the railroad. So, you know, we're backing up to the back of commercial buildings, but also, you know, there's the space between our truck court area and the trail. And then we provided some enhanced landscape that I'll, I'll keep talking about here and show some other perspectives as well. So Lisa had mentioned the eight trees that we've added. You know, one of the challenges that we've continued to work through on this site is just, just how squeezed we are on this eastern side of the site. This detention pond, you can see the size and the scale of that and how much that actually takes up of, of the site here. And we've kind of worked around that constraint. But another piece is kind of the grading constraints that, that are throughout on this edge of the property. You know, we want to make sure that trees that we're planting are going to be able to survive long-term. And so we, we really have been careful about placements and, you know, adding as many trees as we possibly can that we know, you know, are going to survive long-term and have viability for, for survival here, just based on the grades. So you can see there's, there's small kind of pockets where there are not trees and those are really the areas where we're constrained and planting some additional trees. And we're conveying the, the water from Gameas' parcel. And so that all runs kind of this way into the larger detention. So that's one of the considerations that we need to go through when we were looking at, you know, adding some landscape here. And I have one more perspective to look at that kind of shows it in as real, real time as, as we can in this 3D rendering. You know, when we're looking, this is close to, you know, where, where you'd be standing on the trail, kind of in one of those pockets where the trees are just starting as you go north. You know, the, the dock door areas are really going to be, you know, functional for our industrial tenants, but also we'll have these, these trailers and, and some activity with, with industrial trucks on, on the backside of this. So, you know, we really wanted to add some articulation that you could see that would be prominent. And, and the best way that we decided that we could do that is, is with color kind of on the top of the parapets here. You know, i- if we're adding any additional materials like we did on the other side of the building, we really wanted to focus that on the front side of the building that is visible and not, not, you know, have to, have to provide that on the east side. And really, it's because we don't think that adding that is going to make a significant impact because it's not visible. It's not going to be very visible even from the trail. And one other thing to point out too is, is the trail elevation is actually higher than the railroad. So there's some kind of natural buffer that happens as you roll east as that trail being a little bit higher than the railroad area. So we wanted to keep the colors subdued and, you know, gray and kind of muted colors on the side of the building. And that was intentional. Adding the texture and, you know, the additional materials is a really significant cost to us on this side of the building. And we wanted to make sure and, you know, spend those dollars where it was actually going to be really impactful for those that are actually, you know, visiting the building and, and where it would be visible to, to citizens here. So just, just to wrap up here, you know, we're really excited about this project and the, the prospect of it moving forward. We've been working on it a long time in conjunction with, with many different groups. But these new retail tenants and users will provide amenities to the Louisville residents and businesses, job creation, both on the retail side and the industrial side benefits the city. And it allows immediate activation of this, this vacant land that has been hard to develop, has proven to be hard to develop. It's kind of simplifies the process, provides bike lanes, kind of that multi-modal sidewalks and bike paths and, or bike lanes and, and the trail, eventual trail as well. The project will provide sales tax revenue from the industrial and the retail user. Obviously, you know, Jim started us out here. It allows Ascent Church to continue on, on their 550 McCaslin project and, and build their church there. And then this PUD amendment just provides a path forward here. And, and we're excited about the opportunity to develop in Louisville. We really appreciate your time and we open to any questions and comments here.
At this time, we open up to Commissioner questions of the applicant.
So Megan.
Here's New Deal, go ahead.
With regard to the waiver number two and waiver number three. Covered if it may be different.
Commissioner Deal, unfortunately, your audio is fading in and out on us again.
Somebody else go, I'm going to log off and log back in.
Okay. Do any of the other commissioners, Commissioner Moline, please go ahead.
So I have a, a, a question and then a, a comment. And I'll start with a comment first. First off, the exhibits that you guys have provided are really helpful. I, the, the lighting one in particular is one I haven't seen. That, that I just really appreciated the detail and the, yeah, the, the detail of the exhibits you provided. They, they help as a commissioner us to review your application. So thanks very much about that. One, I guess I had a question and it, and it's, it's really referring to the Arch Diocese property. But when you showed maybe one of the very first, first layouts of it, it looked like the Arch Diocese was only going to have a right in, right out on Dillon. And I just wondered, does that mean that, that, like, is there a, a need for a kind of a road, internal road that gets to the Arch Diocese that needs to come through? I guess probably not this particular property, but yeah, I don't know. When I, when I noticed that, I thought, huh, how, how are people west, eastbound going to get into that particular part of the property? So I realize that's maybe not super relevant to tonight's discussion. But if you have an, an answer, I'd be interested in hearing it. So thanks.
Sure, yeah. So actually, the, the way it's, it's kind of misconstrued here because this is conceptual, but the development, the Arch Diocese development will have access to the right in, right out access point that you're seeing there adjacent, as well as there's CCNRs that are established and in place that they have rights to all access points. So all, all properties are going to effectively share these access points and that's how it's going to be set up. So there'll be, there'll, there'll be multiple ways to get into their development.
Okay, okay, thank you. I, I wondered if that was the case. So thanks very much.
Lisa, can you go to gallery view so we can see the other speaker?
Yeah, sorry, Megan. If you can, when they're not specifically talking about a slide, the planning commission prefers to stop sharing. So they can see all the faces. Thank you.
Here we go. Thank you.
Great. Do we have any other additional questions at this time from commissioners? As we're kind of, oh, Commissioner Deal, you're back.
I am. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Yep. Felicia, I was just, and I don't know if this came up, but the breakout between you and Lou and dedication?
Yes.
I was like, that came from obviously a previous agreement. That's something that United is open to revisiting? Is that kind of your desire?
Well, I, we're, I mean, it's really not. We are prepared to pay our cash in lieu fees now. The, the issue is the Arch Diocese and Gameas are not. And so the way that it currently is set up, that in order, because of the GDP tying these three property owners together. And so the way that it currently is set up that in order, because of the GDP tying these three property owners together, when these plat gets approved, technically they would have to pay.
Understand that. I guess my question was, would that be open to kind of a full 12% dedication of land?
I, we've, we do not have the space within our development to do that. And I do not believe that Gameas or Archdiocese are prepared to cover the gap on that as of, as right now. So.
That was my only question.
Okay, great. Thanks. Commissioner Williams.
So I wanted to ask about the eight, or it's a six-foot landscaping perimeter around the building. It is one of the waivers. And I'm wondering if this is because of the concrete construction method that you are using to, to build this particular industrial building? Or is there concern with the land that is, has more expansive soils than anywhere else in the area? Can you kind of give me some info on where that all came from?
Yeah. Um, I, so the geotech report that we do, so we drop borings across the site, you know, it's quite significantly, especially around the building perimeter. And then the geotech makes recommendations based off of the soil conditions. And so we have pretty expansive soils out here. And it is recommended by the geotech engineer to not have, you know, landscaping up against the building and ensure positive drainage away from the building to protect the building foundation. And so we propose to provide that landscaping. We're just moving it elsewhere within the development where it doesn't cause concern for the building.
So did, I'm sorry. So did you find that in the immediate area of the CTC, there are other buildings that weren't using or utilizing that six-foot perimeter for the landscaping?
That I can't answer. I can just, we, we dropped boring specifically in the locations where our building is going to be. And so it gives a read of the exact soil conditions underneath our building. And so that was the geotech recommendation.
Okay. And so it doesn't do anything about with how you're building or the method that you're building?
No, I mean, it could be, it's 100% soil condition. So, you know, you could, we, our soil condition, you know, for the 7-Eleven could be slightly different than the, than the, you know, soil conditions for industrial. So it's.
I don't get that with the, the borings. I, that I get. I just thought that there was something more to this. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah. And I can chime in a little bit too. So, you know, when you, we've, we've had this waiver from time to time over the years. And I think, you know, you could argue, you know, even with kind of a questionable geotech report, you know, could they do xeric landscaping or maybe drip irrigation? Is this a, you know, hard and fast 100%? I don't know. We've done this waiver from time to time for properties in the CTC and from staff's perspective, you know, the landscape elsewhere on the site, you know, offsets it. But that being said, you know, I don't know that the geotech is 100% saying you absolutely can't put any landscaping around the building. I do think the, the water risk though is valid and something that we do see from time to time on this type of a project.
Okay. Thanks for the update.
Great. Do we have any additional commissioner questions of the applicant at this time? Ultimately, we're going to be moving into Commissioner Howe.
I should have a quick question, and it is not necessarily related to any of the standards or, or other things. But for Chase, for 7-Eleven, I wonder if you could just answer a quick question. Do you guys ever do any hydrogen fuel cell or electric charging stations rather than just a gas station?
Yes, we do electric charging stations. We actually just opened a store in Denver on Tuesday this week, and we have an electric charging station out front in the store. So yes, we do have that in our locations.
Is it, have you thought that far in ahead for this project with this, with this? I'm just thinking along the lines of what the citizens of Louisville would, would be looking forward to. Would that be in the cards for this project?
Yeah, we're open to it. I don't see why, why not? If, if we, if you believe that you think it's a need based on the, the vehicles that certain employees that, you know, may be coming in the area pretty frequently, then yeah, I don't, I don't see why not. I think we have enough parking to provide that.
Yeah, there's, there's a, there's a lot of electric car manufacturer and, and ownership in the area, including, well, I won't go into it. But anyway, thanks for answering that question.
Yeah. And I, I'll just piggyback, I believe we're putting several in, in the industrial development. So there'll be some in the development area that isn't just specific to 7-Eleven.
But those wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't be public. They would be for the employees.
Yeah, those would be for the, for the employees. And we have the, we have the option for, for tenants to install those and for those electric charging stations to go in at the time that a tenant goes in so that we can be really intentional about placement of those on the site.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from the commission of the applicant? Seeing none, we'll open it up for public comment. I don't think we have anybody here with us for public comment today, but if you can confirm that, Lisa.
Yeah. So again, hit the raise hand button on your screen or the star nine if you're on by phone. I'm not seeing any hands raised. So no public comment.
All right. Well, we'll close public comment then at this time. At that point, then we'll move into a staff summation.
Yeah. Thank you, planning commission. Really good questions. Appreciate all of your thoughtful dialogue. Again, we're recommending approval as submitted with one condition related to architecture on the east elevation, as well as interested in any of your other thoughts that you'd like to capture and send forward to city council.
Thank you. And we welcome the applicant back for a closing remarks.
Just that we're, we're excited to be able to bring this development to the city of Louisville and the community. And we feel the synergy between the retail and the industrial and all that it could create and bring to our development into the area as well as to the surrounding commuters and Colorado Tech Center. We think it's a win-win and we, we ask for your support in improving it this evening.
Thank you. With that, then we're closing the evidentiary aspect of the hearing and moving into commissioner comments and discussion. Welcome. Anybody at this point? I'm particularly interested, Commissioner Deal, go ahead.
I just want to commend United and the owner for being so cool and appreciative.
Ben, unfortunately, you're still fading in and out on us. Couldn't tell you what it is. We heard some nice words from you though, so that'll work for now unless you, you can, you can chat additional in perhaps.
At least he doesn't look like a cat.
Hey, can you guys hear me? Okay now?
Yeah.
Okay, let me try no earbuds. Yeah, no, I was saying, I appreciate the proposal. I appreciate some of the comments regarding how concerned we were about the rural gateway, the fact that it's a comprehensive plan. Obviously, we've had quite a bit of time together to get to this point. And in terms of the, the waiver requests, I'm inclined to supportive of the waivers. Originally, I was a little concerned about, for the architecture on the east side, but I know that, that little different color alteration, I think satisfies me. I think obviously the only people that would be, that would be folks on the trail.
Commissioner Deal, unfortunately, I, I think actually if you stay in close to your microphone, like you're leaning in now, that may make the difference.
No, I was mentioning in terms of that east side of the building, really the only buddy that's going to see that are the people on the trail. And we're still quite a few years out for that. I would like to, you know, open up, I guess, for city council, and I don't know the exact mechanism for this. The dedication of open space and just taking cash for that. You know, I, I don't know how the decision-making is done on that, but I would like to, you know, raise that up to city or to staff to say, is there a way to get more open space to create more, that more rural feel for the three properties? You know, four dollars a square foot, it's a Ziegels Freeman deal. So we would rather have the land and have a little bit less density. Other comment, I just wanted to say to 7-Eleven team, excited to have you aboard. Again, I think you've heard a little bit about, you know, the rural gateway. So I wanted to mention maybe a friendly comment about when we move into sign design. Is there a way to create something a little bit unique for Louisville? Because this is a gateway into the city. I think that'll go a long way towards, you know, support for your business as well as kind of a good start for the rest of the development.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's a great idea. We could work with the city.
All right, thanks. Additional comments, discussion, Vice Chair Rice, please. I'm particularly curious, Tom, and the, the concerns you had raised initially on process oriented, how are you feeling about those?
Yeah. So, I mean, if, if there is no other tool, then I think we have to go with this modification approach. But what, what I'm concerned about is, is that we're being asked to, to recommend something when we really don't know what the, the, the terms of the deal are. So I, I'm suggesting that we add a condition to our approval that the subdivision agreement with deferral terms on the in lieu payments be provided before this goes to the city council so that then they have something tangible to look at. And I think that's the intent, but it's just from the commission standpoint, we, we really can't recommend on something that we don't know the terms of it. As I suggested earlier, I don't have any difficulty with the, the idea that we pay these fees as the product, as the property develops, but I just want to see a little more definition to all that. And I think that Rob's comments and sort of the details of all that are what I have in mind. With regard to the other recommended condition having to do with the east side of the building, I'm of a mind to agree with the applicant on this. I, I mean, it is the backside of an industrial building that's going to have trucks backed up to it. And it's just not something that's amenable to a, a pretty design. And if you look at what's behind it, it's railroad tracks and then the backend of other industrial buildings. And so really we're talking about a, a trail back there that doesn't even exist yet and will be shielded or buffered with landscape in, in large measure. So I, I would be in favor of removing that condition from our, from our resolution. With regard to the public land dedication business, you know, to me, the, the city's got to want to have property for that to really make any sense. And the city, what I'm hearing, doesn't want a lot of land dedication on this. And it's going to make, if we tried to go with the full percentage of land dedication, it would make the design issues even more intense for these folks who are already trying to squeeze this thing in here. So I think all that makes sense to take the in lieu of cash as opposed to requiring the full percentage dedication. So those are my thoughts.
All right. One comment too, I, I recognize there's not going to be any open space or additional city space on the, the ascent parcel. But, you know, I think in St. Louis, there could be certainly that opportunity.
Could be a different case. I agree with you.
It would be the, in the entirety of the three parcels.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's well said, Ben.
Thank you. Additional, Commissioner Howe.
I agree with Commissioner Deal and Commissioner Rice on that. I think that, I think the option of having maybe the land donation in lieu of the cash or instead of the cash for future parcels, maybe something to keep in mind. You know, I'm, I am split on this because the timing to develop the adjacent partial parcels in a phased approach is a little bit nebulous. We've seen other developments on 96 struggle with tenancy. And there's a possibility to have undeveloped lots for a long, adjacent lots for a long period of time. We would hope that wouldn't happen. And from what the developer said today, there are other plans for adjacent lots to be built out. But we, we hope that would happen. But I guess the, the existing plan is, is a 7-Eleven and maybe a car wash next to it. And that could, could be not contiguous with the, with the idea of development in that area. It also changes, I agree with what Commissioner Deal said, that it, it does change what we have as a rural gateway to more of an urban one. And, and I think we need to be cautious with future PUDs and development and how we're developing this gateway. It, it seems like we're paving paradise to put up a parking lot here. But on the flip side, you know, you know, we have to think what would make this worth it? And it is difficult to, to transition between the CTC and this rural setting that we've got. There, I don't know if it, if this area creates much of a community benefit. I think it probably can be, is more of a commuter benefit and maybe some city revenue. It's a little further away from maybe residential areas that would, that would have walked to or use it as a community benefit. However, saying, having said that, I would like to see this project. I, I think it could, there's a potential for this project to really, really be, put, put us on the map and not just by meeting the standards, by exceeding them. And I know that this is, goes above and beyond the standards. And I think we have to think that way when we develop our land from here on up. And I know that a lot of the commissioners may say, well, you know, we're just talking about meeting the standards. Sure, this meets a lot of the standards and I don't really have any issues with the three waivers that they're asking for. But it would be cool to have a hydrogen fuel cell there. There, they have that all up and down California now, and, and it would put us on the map there. And I think that electric charging station is, is a no-brainer. We've got Tesla across the highway. We've got a lot of electric cars in this area. We, this is, serves as a commuter corridor with Dylan. So, so I think that there's some opportunities here. We've worked with the dark sky lighting. I think that is fantastic. A great job, planning, planning staff to put that in there. It would be nice to have some reusable energy and maybe some solar cells mixed in there. I know, and I understand that that's, that's a little bit above and beyond what we're looking at as a planning commission. But I guess just as a note, if it does pass and it gets to the, to the city council, that would be something that would really be, I think, something that the citizens would really look forward to. But I think that it is, it is a good transition between the CTC and the rural. I think the setbacks have been worked, worked out well, and it's been, and it's been thought out. So I appreciate the presentation and all the staff work that's gone into this.
As we move around here for additional comments, Vice Chair Rice, do you have language for that proposed?
Yeah, I would just say prior to submission to city council, that a final draft of the subdivision agreement be prepared. In its specifics, speak to the deferred payment of in lieu cash contributions.
So can I clarify that that's for presentation to city council?
Yeah.
Not that you wanted to come back.
Or it goes to the city council.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's well underway. Our city attorney is working on it. Their, their attorney is working on it. So staff had already intended that, but that's great to capture that.
That way they know that the planning commission wants to have that finalized before this thing is, is, is finally passed on.
Sure. And I think if you collectively have kind of provisions that you want to capture as far as, you know, maximum length of deferral or kind of what have you, I think, you know, feel free to certainly include that in your resolution of approval.
We have additional commissioner comments, discussion at this, Commissioner Williams.
Sure. I completely support Commissioner Rice's condition to add in here. And I mean, I, I think this is a great project. I think they've spent a lot of time and been very thoughtful in how they plan this. So I appreciate all the work. My, my only thought on it is to make it just a smidge more rural. And I know that Commissioner Howe said the same thing. I was hoping to see less parking, less concrete. The size of the buildings is fine, but just, you know, kind of eliminate some of that concrete that makes it feel more urban. But that, you know, it's not here. of that concrete that makes it feel more urban. But that, you know, it's not here nor there. It's not my choice, but it's just a thought. But other than that, I support the three waivers. And when I say I support the three waivers, the third waiver being all four sides have the same architectural articulation. I do support that, what staff is saying. And I feel that while I understand that the developer is going to cost more for the developer, there could be ways to just spruce it up a little bit without making this very costly. They don't have to. I don't feel it has to match all four sides. I think that the other side, the east side, could just be spruced up in some way that makes it a little bit less drab. How about that? That's my thoughts on this.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Moline.
Yeah, thanks. I can I think I can be pretty brief here. I agree with Tom's condition on the deferral language. And at least for me, I'm very comfortable letting the city attorney and staff and the applicant kind of work out the details on the on the deferral time length and those kinds of things. But I appreciate the idea of having that condition. And I appreciate the fact that the that staff and the applicant have worked hard to make a to create this development that is, as everybody's heard, is a really challenging site. So I appreciate that we've worked together to to get to this point. I agree with Commissioner Williams on the eastern elevation. I think I I would hope that we could find I agree that it's a that it's a unique elevation, but just a little bit of additional work there. I concur with staff. I think it's important. And when you'll be on that trail in the future, you'll want to be looking to the west, because that's where the mountains, that's where those views are. And so to see that eastern elevation have a little bit of improvement to it, I think would be something that would that would be worthwhile. I recognize that it's going to have some landscaping to buffer it. But I would like to see that condition kept if we if we can do it. And lastly, I just wanted to say that as a person that is associated with one of the local open space agencies, sometimes the cities don't always want additional open space to take care of. And I don't know necessarily if that's the case here, but I'm going to go with the recommendation of the of the Parks and Open Space Board and the and the staff. And that maybe is more for a future discussion. But I'm comfortable with where we're at in terms of acres versus a cash in lieu at this point. So thanks.
Thank you.
I can just say I would agree with you. If Parks and Rec in the city is in agreement with that that split, I want to make sure that.
Yeah.
Check that box.
Okay, yep. Appreciate it, Commissioner Deal. Thanks. Great. Thank you, Ben. I also feel that it's important to have some additional articulation on that east side. So I will in favor of keeping that recommended condition in our in our proposals as we move forward. Yeah, I think we've gotten to the point now between what City Council has approved so far and where we're at with the proposals and orientation of the building, that this is likely the best outcome we can squeeze out of this location. So find myself in favor at this time. With that, Commissioner Rice.
Would you entertain a motion?
Please.
So I would move for approval of Resolution number two, series 2021, including condition number one, as indicated by the staff, and then adding a condition number two, which would be the condition concerning development and finalization of the subdivision agreement prior to submission to City Council.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Moline with a second. Nonverbal, we can take that.
Yeah, sorry.
No problem. All right. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rice.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Deal.
Yes.
Commissioner Hefner. Oh, well, Commissioner Howe.
Yes.
Commissioner Moline.
Yes.
And Chair Brown Rice.
Yes. Thank you all very much. Best of luck moving forward. That will close this item and move into, I believe it's just is the staff comments.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Again, want to thank you all for really thoughtful discussion and really appreciate all of your thoughts and comments. And you guys always make these projects better. So just want to go on the record and say that. I also want to welcome tonight, we have two our two new planning staff members who have been hanging out online. You've probably seen a couple faces. We have Ellie Hassan, who is our new planner, too. You'll see her in the coming months. Elliot, I don't know if you want to say a few words.
Yeah, it's really cool being in my first planning commission meeting. And I'm sure I'll see more of you guys in the future.
Welcome.
Thanks.
We also have Kim Bauer, who you will see from time to time. Kim is our new preservation planner. So she's going to be serving, you know, primarily in the capacity of their stark preservation. But you will see her from time to time on planning projects as they come come forward. So, Kim, I don't know if you want to say a few words.
Just that it's nice to meet you all, and thanks for letting me come and sit in this evening.
All right, welcome. Look forward to seeing you.
We are thrilled to have these two ladies on board with us. I know Rob and I are we're very excited to have that. So I don't have any other staff comments other than the anticipated agenda items for your upcoming March 11 meeting. We are on track to do that. So we should have one planning application for you and hopefully some discussion or even just an ordinance related to height measurement. So I don't have.
And then I, yeah, and unless I missed it, I think we do have the Open Government Netflix pamphlet. Have we gone through those items?
No, we haven't yet. So yeah, thank you for that reminder. Yeah. So within your packet, we have just the 2021 version of the Open Government and Ethics Packet for your review. So it's always good to refresh and review that, as well as our 2021 meeting dates. Nothing is really unusual about that. And then we would ask that you adopt Resolution one, adopting the public notice posting locations. And those are the same as last year and the same as all of the other boards and commissions for the city.
I'd make a motion on that if you would entertain it, Steve.
Certainly.
Second.
Yeah, I'd move for approval of Resolution number one, series 2021 regarding public postings.
We have a second roll call vote, please.
Second.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Deal.
Yes.
Commissioner Howe.
Yes.
Commissioner Moline.
Yes.
Commissioner Rice.
Yes.
Chair Brown Rice.
Yes. Thank you. Certainly carries.
I just forgot that I forgot to text Commissioner Hefner. So I'm texting him now. We're rolling quickly through the rest.
Enjoy his dinner or whatever.
Yeah. I'm just going to tell him no need to rejoin, but he can't. Anyway.
Well, do we also do we have any additional planning commission comments? We'll kind of step back a little bit. We skipped over that. No, okay. Great. Well, with that, then.
I had a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Do you want a second, Matt?
I just got back on.
Commissioner Hefner, if you'd like to second, you would be welcome to.
Second, motion to adjourn.
I will second that.
Thank you all.
Good to be to join.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.